Frank, point that to lead us into an indication, please.
I'd like to start off with a prayer or a verse that I personally like. It's John 14, and it's, "Not your heart be troubled; believe in God, believe also in me. In my Father's house are many rooms; if it were not so, would I have told you that I go prepare a place for you? And when I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again, will take you to myself, that where I am you may also be." So I ask Jesus to bring good ideas as we come together here in our minds and in our hearts to make all the right decisions for all the citizens here in Harlingen. In your name, Lord Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. Thank you for most of you who've sat through the workshop and listened to the information that's been provided during that time. It's time we have citizen communication input.
Nick, is Amanda on?
We need to bring Amanda back into the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Hey, what is Dr. Castillo here? Is he stepped outside? Yeah, if he's out there, you can get him, ask him to come in. We'll go ahead and present the proclamation. While we're waiting to queue up Amanda, well, she's here, but let's go ahead and ask Dr. Castillo to come on out.
Hey, Doc. How are you? Hey, Josh.
Josh, I want to stand up for this. They might have a different man. But I want to present this proclamation to Dr. Castillo, who is from the county health authority, and to Dr. Porellus, who is a county health department director. And both of these gentlemen have played vital roles over the last fifteen months during the pandemic, and they've done an absolutely superb job. Dr. Castillo has really a rock for everyone dealing with these very difficult and complicated issues that relate to COVID. I want to thank him really for everything that he has done. But this is a proclamation recognizing the month of August as National Immunization Month, and the beginning of back-to-school preparations and a good time to make sure your children are properly vaccinated before they head back to school. There is no one preventative health measure more important than immunization. As the World Health Organization notes, the international medical community has endorsed the use of vaccines and immunization to prevent and control a number of infectious diseases as well as chronic diseases caused by infections. Whereas vaccinated child, animal food, suffering and death associated with afflictions like diarrhea, measles, pneumonia, polio, who could draw from the American Academy of Pediatrics, says vaccines are 99% effective. Every vaccine goes through a serious test before being approved, which ensures safety and where vaccines are necessary to prevent the spread of infectious diseases, some diseases that many have not eradicated and reappear. That's polio, yeah, Venezuela, 2018. Vaccines are studied intensively by the FDA and the CDC and many other organizations to missionally keep watch over existing vaccines for possible complications. Whereas, for immunity, is when a certain percent of immunized people in a community reaches the level for everyone, including those who are too young or too sick, to be immunized in some degree of protection. And it's important that as many people as possible get immunized. Very risky to the health of other children to rely on further immunity to protect you non-immunized.
Recording in progress.
By forgetting or opting to skip booster vaccinations, you are undergunning the effectiveness. So therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, here, I proclaim the month of August 2021 as National Immunization Month throughout the city of Harlingen. So I'm going to present this to Josh, really, I thank him, and to you for joining, and congratulate you all for the really valiant efforts that you all made on our behalf. And while you're here, Dr. Castillo, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you find this is so important, especially today.
Yeah, I think I was on to him.
Yeah, okay. So thank you, Mayor, for bringing this to everybody's attention. You know, we fell behind on routine vaccinations during the crisis, where even healthcare, routine healthcare was grinding to a halt as we focused on treating COVID in our community. And we were definitely very hard hit. Doctors' offices shut down, everything stopped, and we're still playing catch-up. We're still seeing people come into our hospitals sicker because they put off medical care, either through their own wishes or it just wasn't available. And unfortunately, we're still behind on vaccinations. And with the new school year coming, we definitely want to remind parents to get their kids up to date on the routine vaccinations. That's how we are not having to deal with outbreaks of illness like measles in our community. It's how we're preventing kids from getting sick from what used to be routine childhood illnesses that would lead to death or disability. That's why we don't see that as often anymore, is because we've done so good on vaccines. And after what we've been through with school closures and what we've learned from that, we definitely know we cannot go back to that anymore. Our schools need to stay open, our kids need to be going to face-to-face school, but we need to keep them safe. Nobody wants their kids getting sick going to school. So the routine vaccinations have been doing that for a long, long time, and now we have the COVID-19 vaccination available for those 12 and over to help prevent them from getting COVID as they're doing their extracurricular activities, as they're socializing, as they're getting to be kids, and especially as they're going to school. So if you're a parent and you've been on the fence about, is it right for your kid or not? Right now, we're in the middle of a Delta COVID surge. Cases are going up, they're going to keep going up, coinciding right with school opening. One of the things you can do to keep your kids safe, because I know we had hoped this was all behind us, we had hoped we had hit that herd immunity that you mentioned, Mayor, about what we've done with other illnesses, but unfortunately, no. So take advantage of having that vaccine available for COVID and for the rest of our kids. You know, please, please, please encourage them to wear masks in school. That's going to be the other layer of protection we can offer. But we're very blessed to have the vaccine. It's holding up great right now. Our hospitalizations are surging in the county and the whole valley. You know, I was talking with the CEOs today, things are really going up. But one thing, almost 95% of people there have in common is they're unvaccinated. So, you know, the vaccine is working, even if you hear about people who have been vaccinated for COVID getting COVID, they're not ending up in the hospital. So please, 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 if you're also on the fence yourself as an adult about vaccinations, about COVID vaccinations, please take to heart what you're seeing around you and get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Castillo. All right, so we can help you get vaccinated, but their vaccine is plentiful, and it's in most pharmacies and in HEB, and it's available on demand, but we need help, just call the city or the county, and we can get you vaccinated right away. Please spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to citizen communication now, and Amanda, first on.
You're on mute, Amanda?
Amanda, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. Here we go.
We're going to get the hang of this thing.
And he wants to be called there. It's 118 North, he wants this park lane, and I'm going to go ahead and call him right now. The one of... Try again. The one of the customers... No, Mayor, there's a... I mean, the call's not going through, so let's go to the next one. It's Frank Ferris, and he wants for me just to read his comments, and it reads like this. "I will be attending in person to express my opposition to the special use permit." So he might be in the audience, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't see Frank. Is he here? No, I don't see Frank.
Okay, then we proceed with the next one. It's Brad Frudenberg, and it's 144 South Nuasis Park Lane, and he would like to be called. So let me go ahead and give him a call.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system. 8326873890 is not available. At the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
Hello, this is Amanda Lisondo with the city of Harlingen. You submitted a form to speak under public comments, and we're calling you, so thank you so much. Bye-bye. And then I'm going to skip Norma. It must be the wife, same address, so I'm going to go to Kim Wagman, 149 South Nuasis Park Avenue, and he might be in person, Mayor, that he would be attending the meeting.
Hi. Just go ahead and start?
Yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself and give us your residence address, and you have two minutes.
All right. My name is Kim Wagman. I live at 149 South Nuasis Park Lane in Harlingen. I've lived at that address for 25 years. I was here and spoke about two or three weeks ago. I'd like to reiterate what I said at that last meeting. The Sepulvedas have presented an argument, excuse me, to allow the construction of a metal building in their backyard based on some violations of the deed restrictions in Nuasis Park. The majority of the violations are situations that can be easily resolved by removing, excuse me, nervous, by removing the violations, such as a boat, RVs, from a driveway. The construction that they want to build is a permanent structure that cannot be moved. The structure is so massive that it requires a special use permit, a permit that was overwhelmingly opposed by the majority of Nuasis Park homeowners through a petition and which was provided to the Planning and Zoning Committee, a permit that was overwhelmingly opposed at the city commissioners' meeting on July 21st, a permit that was again opposed last week at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. And now again, we are here to oppose the approval of the special use permit. With the overwhelming opposition to the special use permit, the Sepulvedas' application should be denied.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else downstairs that wants to speak? Go ahead and bring them up here to the foyer. They've signed up.
Yes, Mayor, we have Donna Rae Leder, but she wants to speak on three minutes, and she's in person.
Am I good to go?
So, yeah, just go ahead and state your name and your residence address, please.
Okay, my name is Sharon Mockner, and I live at 147 South Nuasis Park Lane, directly across from the Sepulvedas.
Yeah, you have two minutes, thanks.
Okay, the other night I was listening to the TV, and I heard the jingle, "Like a Good Neighbor, State Farm is here." And it got me to thinking about what is a good neighbor? A good neighbor is someone who's got your back. A good neighbor is someone who watches out for your property and protects your property when you're not there. A good neighbor is one who will help take care of their property as well as respecting yours. I am here representing our neighbors. During this process, we have received at least three notices from the city asking us to come and appeal to you, whether we want this, what I refer to as the Taj Mahal built across the street from me. Okay? It is, as you know, it's a 2,000-square-foot metal barn in our neighborhood. We have appealed to you in multiple ways. We've written letters, we've signed petitions, we've come and addressed you personally on a couple of occasions, and it just seems like we are not being heard. City commissioners, as I understand, are there to do the will of the people, not a person. Finally, I appeal to the Sepulvedas to be a good neighbor. Add a garage, if you like. Nobody's complaining about that. We just don't want the beauty of our neighborhood incorporated into having this enormous building made out of metal in our beautiful neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, did Mr. Earl Wellington?
Amanda, we have another one that Mr. Ferris, number two, has walked in, and so I'm going to give him a chance to speak. If you would state your name and your residence address, please.
My name is Frank Ferris. I live at 137 Nuasis Park Lane, and I'm opposed to this permit.
So you have two minutes, Mr. Ferris.
Okay. Sepulvedas did a great job of selling this permit to the staff, and the staff has recommended approval.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said, "The Sepulvedas did a great job of selling this permit to staff, and staff has recommended approval." And I realize the commissioners, especially the new ones, rely on staff to make recommendations that are beneficial to the neighborhoods. And I think through this public notice and public hearing process, it's become evident that there's overwhelming opposition to this permit, and so the initial staff recommendation is just wrong. And we really need your help to represent the majority of the owners out, your constituents, and vote no against this ordinance. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, so then, did Mr. Wellington, is he in person?
We have someone here already, Amanda. Okay, would you state your name and your residence address, please?
Good evening. My name is Norma Frudenberg, and my residence is 144 South Nuasis Park Lane. My husband and I recently moved to Harlingen and decided to purchase a lot in Nuasis Park for several reasons. We liked the look and feel of the community. It appeared that people took pride in their homes, and deed restrictions were in place to protect that community. A few days before we closed on the lot, we were notified of the petition to the notice of application for a special use permit. I was shocked that anyone in our community would want to build a 2,000-square-foot metal storage building in a residential area. This monstrosity of a building is over 13 times the standard, 144-square-foot storage building that is permitted in a single-family R1 district. I'm not only concerned for the environment of the community, the property values, but very concerned that this will cause flooding issues in the community and at our home. Our lot is next door to this property, and the flooding is a great concern for us. We were affected by Harvey with 27 inches in our house. So we, each owner in Nuasis Park, in the future, are we all allowed to build these storage buildings of 2,000 square foot? Where would that leave the community as far as drainage and flooding? I feel that the only possible positive outcome of this 2,000-square-foot storage building is that the Sepulvedas will have a place to store their belongings. A much simpler solution is for them to obtain a storage facility and not be a burden to our community by negatively altering the property value and potentially causing flooding issues. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Frudenberg here?
Yes.
Okay, would you ask him to come in?
Hello. My name is Brad Frudenberg. I live at, or I bought the lot at 144 South Nuasis Park, right next door to the Sepulvedas. My wife and I just moved here from Houston, and our house flooded in Houston from Hurricane Harvey. We had 27 inches of water in our house, so it destroyed our house, destroyed our belongings. And this didn't happen because of rainwater. This happened because the Army Corps of Engineers didn't follow their rules about how to manage the reservoir near our house. And so because of that, our house flooded. The Army Corps of Engineers is now the subject of a multi-billion-dollar lawsuit to seek compensation for that mismanagement and for not following their own rules. Now, here I am a few years later in Harlingen, Texas, in front of another government entity that has rules to help prevent flooding in my new neighborhood, and it appears that they're headed down a path of choosing not to follow those rules. Imagine if everybody in our neighborhood built a 2,000-square-foot barn, even though the rules say 144 square feet is the limit. Imagine how much additional runoff and flooding we're going to have in our neighborhood because of that. And I wouldn't hold the people who built those structures responsible. I think this council would be responsible for not following their own rules that they had in place to prevent this from happening. So I encourage you, please follow your rules, and don't allow this 2,000-square-foot barn to be built. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sharon Mockner wants to be called.
Okay, Ms. Mockner was already here, and she spoke in person. So did we ever get ahold of Dr. Liebert or Dr. Wellington? Are they here?
Should I wait, then?
Yeah, if you could just wait a moment, please. We'll call you after we get these folks who are on the list ahead of you.
Mayor, is one of the...
Commissioner, your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Bruce Liebert, 118 North Nuasis Park Lane, Harlingen, Texas. I've been a part of the community in Nuasis Park for 16 years. My dad, Coach Liebert, was known for two things: two wrongs don't make a right, and when you commit, commit. The Sepulvedas have used other things in the community, in our little neighborhood, to say that what they're putting up, even though it breaks, you know, our deed of restriction because others have broken the deed, that they can do the same thing. Look, two wrongs don't make a right. If I wanted to put up my 80-foot climbing tower with my zip line over the house, that would be seen, I think, by others as being wrong. And that 2,000-square-foot building they plan to put up is 14 times bigger than the deed restriction calls for. Second, when you commit, commit. When my wife and I moved to the neighborhood 16 years ago, when we signed our papers, we knew there was a deed of restrictions. And though there are things we would like to do, we realized that for the good of our neighbors, there are things that you give up. That's what neighborly love is about. You just, you give up voluntarily certain things to live in a community. That's what keeps our communities civil and prevents anarchy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the only one we've missed is, hang on, Mr. Lozano, I haven't called you yet. Is Mr. or Dr. Wellington, number six?
Mr. Bogwell?
Is he here?
He's actually out of state. He had to go out of state, so...
Okay, did he want to be called, though? Did you try to call him, Amanda, Dr. Wellington, Earl Wellington?
I'm going to call him right now, Mayor.
Hello. I'm Earl Wellington, and I live at 147 Nuasis Park Lane, which is within 200 feet of the Sepulvedas, separated from them by a vacant block. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir.
Okay. First, I want to thank City Commissioner Renee Pettis for all the attention he has given me and others concerned about this SUP application. Also, I want to thank P&amp;Z Commissioner J.B. Garcia for his attention to drainage and flooding issues. I also thank Ms. Allison Bastian Rodriguez for her opinion regarding the majority. Regarding the proposed storage building, the devil is in the details. The city allows a 144-square-foot storage building. The proposed structure is over 13 times that size in area and over 16 feet in height. This is the height of a highway overpass. This 2,000-square-foot tall metal building will be an undeniable eyesore. It is the size of a house. A small metal building may not be attractive, but will not draw attention. This extremely large structure cannot be overlooked. I cannot imagine that the mayor and city commissioners would want to live within 200 feet of such a structure. A number of my neighbors living within 200 feet of the proposed structure detailed their objections at the July 21st meeting, and they pointed out the definite visibility of such a structure. Flooding and drainage will certainly be a problem. We live in an area with no city sewage, and we all have septic tanks. We have no concrete curbing or city street drainage. We live in an area with serious problems with standing water and mosquito-borne illnesses like West Nile, Zika, and Dengue are seen in the valley. Will this structure withstand high winds? of that. And I wouldn't hold the people who built those structures responsible. I think this council would be responsible for not following their own rules that they had in place to prevent this from happening. So I encourage you, please follow your rules and don't allow this 2,000-square-foot barn to be built. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sharon Mckner wants to be called.
Okay. No, Ms. Mckner was already here, and she spoke in person. So on these, so did we ever get ahold of Dr. Liebert or Dr. Wellington? Are they out? Are they here?
Should I wait, then?
Yeah. If you could just wait a moment, please. We'll call you. We'll call you after we get these folks who are on the list ahead of you. Your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Bruce Liebert, 118 North Oasis Park Lane, Harlingen, Texas. I've been a part of the community in Oasis Park for 20, or for 16 years. My dad, Coach Liebert, was known for two things: two wrongs don't make a right, and when you commit, commit. The Sepulvedas have used other things in the community, in our little neighborhood, to say that what they're putting up, even though it breaks, you know, our deed of restriction because others have broken the deed, that they can do the same thing. Look, two wrongs don't make a right. If I wanted to put up my 80-foot climbing tower with my zip line over the house, that would be seen, I think, by others as being wrong. And there, that 2,000-square-foot building they plan to put up is 14 times bigger than the deed restriction calls for. Second, when you commit, commit. When my wife and I moved to the neighborhood 16 years ago, we, when we signed our papers, we knew there was a deed of restrictions. And though there are things we would like to do, we realize that for the good of our neighbors, there are things that you give up. That's what neighborly love is about. You just, you give up voluntarily certain things to live in a community. That's what keeps our communities civil and prevents anarchy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So the only one we've got, we've missed is, hang on, Mr. Lozano, I'm not having a call to you yet. Is Mr. or Dr. Wellington, number six?
Mr. Vogel.
Is he here?
He's actually out of state. He had to go out of state, so.
Okay. Did he want to be called, though? Did you try to call him, Amanda? Dr. Wellington? Earl Wellington?
I'm going to call him right now. Right now.
Hello. Hello. This is.
I'm Earl Wellington, and I live at 144 South Oasis Park Lane, which is within 200 feet of the Sepulvedas, separated by, from them by a vacant block. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir.
Okay. First, I want to thank City Commissioner Renee Pettis for all the attention he has given me and others concerned about this SUP application. Also, I want to thank P&amp;Z Commissioner J.B. Garcia for his attention to drainage and flooding issues. I also thank Ms. Allison Bastian Rodriguez for her opinion regarding the majority. Regarding the proposed storage building, the devil is in the details. The city allows a 144-square-foot storage building. The proposed structure is over 13 times that size in area and over 16 feet in height. This is the height of a highway overpass. This 2,000-square-foot tall metal building will be an undeniable eyesore. It is the size of a house. A small metal building may not be attractive, but will not draw attention. This extremely large structure cannot be overlooked. I cannot imagine that the mayor and city commissioners would want to live within 200 feet of such a structure. A number of my neighbors living within 200 feet of the proposed structure detailed their objections at the July 21st meeting, and they pointed out the definite visibility of such a structure. Flooding and drainage will certainly be a problem. We live in an area with no city sewage, and we all have septic tanks. We have no concrete curbing or city street drainage. We live in an area with serious problems with standing water and mosquito, mosquito-borne illnesses like West Nile, Zika, and Dengue are seen in the valley. Will this structure withstand high winds? Many of us have seen similar structures become miserable during hurricanes. I implore you to reject this application. If you accept it, you will face a very dangerous precedent which could affect all R1 neighborhoods and make Harlingen residential area much more attractive. You might be inadvertently compromising public safety and welfare. As J.B. Garcia pointed out in the July 14th meeting.
Sir, your two minutes are up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wellington.
Mr. J.B. Garcia pointed out in the July 14th meeting.
So Amanda, let's go on to the.
Having a number of instructions.
Go on to number eight.
Okay. And that's Donna Rae Leonard, and she wants to speak on term limits. And I believe she's in person, Mayor.
I think that's you. So if you'd just come on up and state your name and your residence address, you have two minutes, please.
Good evening. My name's Donna Rae Leonard. I live in District 1. I'm here this evening to advocate for the citizens of Harlingen and the adoption of term limits. More and more municipalities are voting to place term limit initiatives on the ballot in their upcoming elections, and subsequently, term limits are passing with flying colors. Why term limits? Voters are no longer confident that career politicians have their best interests at heart. Citizens are calling for a government of like-minded people, such as their peers and local business leaders, to represent them. Voters are no longer favoring politicians who homestead in these highly coveted seats. Since the time of the founding fathers, the general consensus is that people, when given power, will eventually be corrupted by it. If there are term limits in place, the power they possess will be limited to a specific period of time. Candidates will be more likely to run for the purpose of serving the people, and they would be leaving office before corruption dominates their decisions. Elected officials will have less time in office to develop financially beneficial relationships with special interest groups so that these groups cannot become a primary influence in their governance. With term limits in place, elected officials will be more responsible to their constituents as soon they will become constituents themselves, and they will have to live under the same laws that they created while in office. With term limits, elected officials will set goals. They will get in, accomplish those goals, then get out, and let somebody else come in with a fresh perspective and new ideas. In closing, we the people encourage you to vote in favor of a resolution to place term limits on the ballot. President Truman once said, "Term limits would cure both senility and seniority. Both are terrible legislative diseases." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And so next is Ron Lozano. You have two minutes to speak. Please state your name and your residence address. You have two minutes to speak on both of your issues.
Well.
You have two minutes to speak on both of the items.
That's not what the law says under 551. I've told you that many times, and you've read it many times. So you have to abide by the law. I know you don't think you're in Texas.
Your time has started. You're using your time.
Coin of the realm, good examples, people that think they're so holy, but they flip-flop. Jesus said, "Who's on the coin?" Caesar. So maybe that's your deity. That's what you have to be careful for. The way, look at Chris right now. He knows the law, but he don't care because he's in Harlingen. This consent agenda item, I'm glad somebody had the gumption to take it off, but whatever attorney allowed it to be on the consent, that was never the purpose of consent. And that's how far Chris has strayed from legal concepts that he should know better on. I think you've already heard enough on the term limits. Other than, again, why don't you let the citizens decide? Why are you so afraid of the citizens? You're petrified. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So item number 10, I believe, is Jesus Robles.
Yes, Mayor.
He's outside.
And he wants his comments to be read. Or is he outside?
We've got him. We have him coming in. Please state your name and your residence address. And you have two minutes.
Jesse Robles, 1642 Hamilton, Harlingen. Time start right now? Mayor, City Commission, City Manager, Ms. City Secretary. In item 18 regarding the City Manager's job performance and review of his contract, during the election campaign process, it was rumored that certain candidates may have promised to remove the City Manager with the motivation to do so unclear. I can, I cannot confirm or deny this, that statement, but it does raise a concern for me. I've had the opportunity to work with the City Manager during my service as a member of the Community Improvement Board, mostly addressing quality of life matters for our community at large. In 2007, the citizen revoked for the use of a portion of sales tax revenue to address quality of life needs in the city, primarily but not limited to the, address the poor conditions of our parks. In 2016, the City Commission assigned the 4B Board to fund and develop the One Vision, One Harlingen Comprehensive Plan, which involved community input through four community forums and an in-depth survey process. As a result, the City Commission established a list of 15 priorities, three of which of the four, top four, involve the use of 4B funding. The Board developed and completed the two, the top two, and completed Phase 1 of the, of four, of a five-phase development plan. And, and basically, that's, that's shown here in, in the report card. It is noteworthy that the City Manager was instrumental in the success and completion of not only the 4B projects, but the progression and completion of all 15 priorities set by the Comprehensive Plan. The City Manager creatively forced.
I was going to ask you to kind of wrap it up. Save the time.
A plan, in planning, foresight in planning has constantly positioned our city with opportunities to leverage our tax dollars with as much as seven cents on the dollar from federal and state funds, allowing the citizens to experience great benefit for each dollar spent for the good of our community. Dan Serna is a Harlingen son from humble beginnings. He started with the city in the lower ranks and has risen through each internal rung meritoriously, giving himself.
Mr. Robles, you got?
I'm done.
Fifteen seconds.
Yes. I'm done.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all of the citizen communication, Amanda?
That is it, Mayor. No more.
Okay. We have a gentleman that says he signed up.
Raoul Pena III. He hasn't been back since.
Okay. Come on up and state your name and, and your, and your residence, and you have two minutes.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name's Raoul Pena III. My wife and I own 145 South Oasis Park Lane in the Oasis Park subdivision in Harlingen. We're currently building our home. It is diagonally across from the Sepulveda family, who are requesting this special use permit to build a 2,000-square-foot metal storage building on their property located at 146. We're 145, they're 146. I submitted a letter to the Planning and Zoning Department opposing the proposed metal storage building because it completely violates the Oasis Park subdivision deed restrictions. Each property owner is provided a copy of these deed restrictions, and they are to be passed on to the next owner when that property is sold. Our neighbor, Mr. Wellington, Dr. Earl Wellington, and I went door-to-door gathering a petition in our neighborhood. We both put a lot of work and effort into this petition, and I ask that you seriously take it into consideration. Out of the 14 neighbors that reside within 200-foot radius, out of the 14 neighbors, 13 of them, 13 of the neighbors signed our petition because they are also opposed to having a metal storage building in our subdivision. Gentlemen, that's more than 90% do not want this metal building in our neighborhood. Outside of the, of the 200-foot radius, we talked to neighbors outside of it as well, and they expressed their concerns about having a metal storage building in our neighborhood. They felt that allowing one neighbor in the subdivision to construct a metal storage building may open the door for others to want to do the same. Some of the concerns our neighbors had were flooding. The properties, most of the properties are approximately one acre. When you consider that the majority of the homes in this neighborhood have an attached three-car garage and a living area of approximately 3,000 square feet, an extended driveway, a sidewalk, a septic system with a leach field for the tanks to drain to, that leaves very little room for, for, for the yard to absorb any rainwater. Second of all is the appearance. The metal storage building does not conform to the Sepulvedas' home, as it is a requirement of the Oasis Park subdivision deed restrictions. Mr. Sepulveda claimed previously that he ordered his metal storage building in a green color so that it can blend with the surrounding trees. The Sepulveda residence is made of brick and stucco cladding, not metal panels, and it is not green in color.
Wrap it up.
We'll do.
15 seconds.
Okay. The proposed metal building is approximately 20 feet tall, and when you consider that an overpass is approximately 16 feet, an overpass, an expressway overpass, this metal building is going to be taller than that. So that's, green is not going to hide it. Getting, ordering one in the color green is not going to hide this metal storage building. Another thing is property values. I talked to a local Realtor, Ms. Annette Baker, and she immediately said, "Oh, no, that's going to bring the property values down for that subdivision." Gentlemen, I ask that you listen to the majority of the neighbors in, in our subdivision. The majority of these people have lived in the Oasis Park subdivision for more than 20 years. They are lifetime residents of this neighborhood. The Oasis Park subdivision is designated as an R1 subdivision, and we want to preserve that. This area is not a commercial or industrial zoning, nor is it an agricultural area. Therefore, I consider that the majority of the neighbors.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but we have to, everybody's getting the same time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and God bless you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that concludes our citizen communication. We're going to go on to item two, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19, 2021, and a special City Commission meeting of June 24, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I just wanted to make one correction on that. It was, everything's good except when, you know, on the top, when it says the Commissioners? That was my first meeting, and it still has Victor's name on it. And it's actually, it's supposed to be mine. That's the only correction.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, we can just, you want to correct that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct that, and then I'm good.
Okay. All right. Well, with that correct, we'll ask that that correction be made. With that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, like, sign the motion carries. All right. So we're going to take item 3B out of the consent agenda, and I'll read it. Item 3B, second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance, amending code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen for a special use permit, SUP, to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential, single-family R1 district located at 146 South Oasis Park Lane, bearing a description of Block 16, Block 1, Oasis Park subdivision, and dealing with related matters.
Yes, Mayor. I'm here to answer any questions.
Javier, does anybody have any questions, or Javier, or does anybody want to see the presentation again?
No. Well, my thing was, because when we first, when we first approved it, because I know when it went to planning and zoning, it was on the, well, it was on one of the conditions that they, not condition, but something that they added to it, that they wanted a flood study.
Correct.
And then I noticed when we signed, when we approved it last time, it did not have the flood study. And I noticed, because I know when, we've had a lot of the citizen communication, and a lot of them mentioned the deed restrictions. But unfortunately, the deed restrictions are not something that the City Commission can actually take into consideration, because that's something that you would have to do with, like, I guess, your homeowners association. I know your homeowners association is not really active right now, but if you had had the homeowners association, that's something that you could have, you know, got together and maybe could have, you know, got an injunction or something to prevent them from doing that. But as the City Commission, we have to go by, you know, the recommendations of the staff and also, in other words, what they did was they went through the process. They went through the process, they crossed all their, they dotted their i's, they crossed their t's. And I understand the fact that it's 13 times the, the, the size, but that's the reason why we have a special use permit, because they go in, they check it to make sure, that's the job for planning and zoning. And then, so the one thing that did bother me about it, though, was that the flood study. Because I know drainage is a major issue, especially in my district, which the, the house is in. But from what I understand, if we add the flood study to the permit, then that permit will not be issued until the Sepulvedas go ahead and get that, you know, fixed and stuff like that to compensate for the green space that they're losing because of the 2,000-square-foot storage.
Correct, Commissioner. It wasn't in the motion, it wasn't clarified, but it is in the ordinance. It's, it's, so when the ordinance was adopted in first reading, that drainage report is included in there. And the Sepulvedas have no objections to providing a drainage report, and they already hired a civil engineer to prepare it. So that they have no objections to, to the drainage report and building a detention pound to compensate for the green area that will be lost to the building.
Okay. Because, and another, I just wanted to add another thing. This is honestly one of the most difficult decisions that, that, that we've had to, well, that I've had to, like, deal with. I've listened to both sides, honestly. I know I went to the noises. I spoke to you, Mr. Pena, and I spoke to Ms. Freidenberg and Dr. Wellington, everybody over the phone. And at the same time, I spoke to Mrs. Sepulveda, and I was trying to get both sides. But when it came down to it, they did everything right, and we can, and I understand what the point about the deed restrictions, but that's not something that, like I said previously, that we can really go by. So as long as that flood study's in, as long as that, that, because that's, to me, that's the thing, because I know somebody, I know they mentioned the, the hazard to the community, and that's true, the flooding. And I know I spoke to another resident earlier today, and they mentioned how one of their neighbors didn't take into that consideration how their house gets flooded, and I don't want that to happen to anybody else. So I'm going to push that we go ahead and motion to go ahead and approve it with the condition that the permit's not given or approved unless they have the flood study, and everything's good to go for the drainage.
I'll second that. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I always listen to the mass of the people.
Yeah. I don't think we ought to grant the special use permit, and this is a huge variance between 144-square-foot normal size of a storage unit. And we have the power to deny the special use permit. And when you have this many people in a neighborhood come to the City Commission and tell us they don't want this in their neighborhood, I think we ought to listen to them. You know, we live, you know, we had a, we had a, a neighborhood come to us a little while back that there was a developer that wanted a variance for three lots. They wanted to put three lots on that irregularly shaped lot across from.
Davis and Turt.
From Shadowbrook.
Yeah.
And the Shadowbrook subdivision residents came in force. They all, they all came, said, "We don't want that here. It's going to cause us drainage issues." And even though the staff had recommended the approval of the variance, the City Commission denied the variance.
I agree with you.
I think that we ought to be consistent in the way we treat these types of subjects, and we're not being consistent. We're going to deny variance over here because, you know, more than 50% of the people in Shadowbrook come out and say, "We don't want that thing in our neighborhood." And now we've got 80% of the neighborhood coming out in Oasis Park, and they're telling us, "We don't want that thing in our neighborhood." We ought to listen to them.
But Mayor, that was a different situation in that what turned my decision on that, since you brought it up with Mr. Moody, was when he said, "I'm going to, I'm going to build this, and my, my properties should be real nice and neat," and all this stuff. And that one citizen said, "I'm glad you brought it up," and she wasn't going to bring it up. And she literally had a file of pictures showing how his properties were at that time. And that's what's my position. And, and the issue I had with this is that they, he's got a binder of photos and photos of, of deed, those same deed restrictions they're arguing about, that everybody's in violation of.
Well, but that's not, that's not the issue. The issue is not the deed restrictions. We're not here to enforce the deed. We're not here to enforce the deed restrictions. We're here to, we're not here to enforce the deed restrictions. That's not our job.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you that, that, because I've, I've litigated deed restrictions before. A waiver, a waiver is not, you know, if somebody does something, that's not a waiver. So you can enforce any deed restriction at any time, and that would be a private We're going to deny variance over here because, you know, more than 50% of the people in Shadowbrook come out and say, we don't want that thing in our neighborhood. And now we've got 80% of the neighborhood coming out in Noises Park, and they're telling us, we don't want that thing in our neighborhood. We ought to listen to them.
But Mayor, that was a different situation, in that what turned my decision on that, since you brought it up with Mr. Moody, was when he said, I'm going to, I'm going to build this, and my, my properties should be real nice and neat and all this stuff, and that one citizen said, I'm glad you brought it up, and she wasn't going to bring it up. And she literally had a file of pictures showing how his properties were at that time. And that's what's my position.
Yeah, because I-
And, and the issue I had with this is that, that he's got a binder of photos and photos of, uh, of, uh, deed, those same deed restrictions they're arguing about, that everybody's in violation of.
Well, but that's not, that's not the issue. The issue is not the deed restrictions. We're not here to enforce the deed, we're not here to enforce the deed restrictions. We're here to, we're not here to enforce the deed restrictions. That's not our job.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you that, that, under the, because I've, I've litigated deed restrictions before, a waiver, a waiver is not, you know, if somebody does something, that's not a waiver. Uh, so you can enforce any deed restriction at any time, and that would be a private civil matter.
Exactly.
But this is an issue of whether or not we should grant, uh, basically a variance or a special use permit for something that's really out of the ordinary. And I just think that we ought to listen to the neighborhood. That, that's all I'm going to say about it. I want to recognize this lady. She wants to come over here and talk. And, uh, I believe you're the, you're the residence owner, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
You're the applicant. All right.
Um, one second. May I approach?
Next time, we would ask you, but you only have two minutes, because, you know, you need, and next time, please sign up.
Well, that's what was with the other husband and wife.
Go ahead.
And other husband and wife. But, um, I just wanted to provide this to the commission, so we can have a understanding that you and Colette are here.
Is the existing building that's already there right now, that's nobody complaining about? There's a boat in there, three cars, it's pretty big.
Is that metal?
Yes, it is. That boat is bigger than my boat. Um, and nobody's complaining about this building.
How close is that to your property?
It's within 200 square feet of my property line.
Okay. And so if 90% of the properties, uh, opposed it, he's probably the one that opposed it, but he built one himself?
And nobody has argued that my door, uh, this is bigger. And this is, uh, this is smaller than mine, not much smaller than my.
And I would imagine that was not engineered.
This is not built without permit.
Built without a permit.
Yeah, just built.
In the same neighborhood, that's the same, that's the same degree restriction.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, I respectfully disagree that 80% of our community did not
petition. 29 people signed the petition, and the petition is, uh, is not completely accurate either. And I brought that up with the board, and also, and I'm sorry for the details, but I will tell you that 26 people did not sign. So to me, slightly 50%. And we're talking about good neighbors. My neighbor said, oh, you're a good neighbor, you know, you will respect that. Well, a good neighbor also allows you to do what you want on your own property. And that's all I'm asking. We're not asking for any special exceptions. And I know, Mr. Mayor, that you're not, you shouldn't be, but maybe on, uh, on this. But everybody is, all of you, but I think the bowling members are the ones that should make the decision.
We do have more, uh, engineered, uh, drainage.
All right. Okay.
And, and yeah, so we do have that-
Okay. Thank you very- Have you provided that to the city, the drainage?
Uh, yeah. It's already been, uh, we already have it, uh, we, we knew that it was conditioned upon that for it to be approved.
That's not something we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all very much.
And I know that was, that was one of my, because I know you brought that up about the drainage, uh, Mayor, and I agree with you on that. Um, but that's, that's why I wanted the, the study. Because what that's, that's going to do, and that's going to compensate under that plan. They have to, basically what they're going to do is get like a little detention pound, and they're going to have to compensate for that. Because, as you were, you're fully aware of this, I'm, I'm very majorly for drainage. And as soon as I heard that you guys mentioned drainage, I was already like, oh, forget it. Because, you know, I don't want, my name, my district's already done with drainage. I didn't want that. But through this flood study and through the, before they get the permit and all that, that's going to, um, um, compensate for that. Plus, the building is not, um, from what Javier told me, it's not 20 feet, it's 17.8, right?
I think so.
The actual height, the plants that we received is 17 feet, eight inches at the highest point.
Okay. And then I did go, because, like, I don't like talking out of my butt without actually knowing, so I did go over there. That's when I spoke to you, Mr. Pena, and I, and I looked at the property, and I walked to the, to the lot that was next door, and I looked at it, and there's some shrub, there's trees over there. And also from the street, I was imagining, okay, if I'm here, how was, how am I going, would I be able to see it from, from the street? And honestly, you wouldn't be able to see it from the street. Um, so I, honestly, you can't see something from the street. I don't know how, I don't think that would really affect, um, property values. But, um, I do understand what everybody was saying from your neighborhood. Trust me, I do. But, um, I just had to go with, um, basically, it's like a balancing act. I hope you can understand that. It's, it's a balancing act, and I know that, um, not everybody was going to be pleased with that, but my thing was, I wanted to make sure that you guys were safe when it came to drainage. Because the other stuff where you guys were like, you know, I don't like it, I, I get that. But that, that's something different. My thing was, I wanted to make sure that your property or no other person's property was going to be adversely affected by drainage. That was my thing. And that flood study, and then the, the, what they're going to have to do with that, that's going to compensate for that. Because if that wasn't there, I would have already, like, I would have denied it right away.
We will hope that it compensates for it, but when you, when you count, for a second-
Sir, I think we have a first and a second. Okay. Well, did you ask, did you ask him a question?
Cool.
Uh, Mr. Pena.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. Listen, okay. All right. Is there, are there, is there an added discussion among the city commission?
I just, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say one more thing. I know I didn't fill-
Thank you very mu, thank you very much.
Two, two minutes. I just wanted to address the, the drainage issue one last time for any doubts that we do, we have this study.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. I need to ask you to sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other, uh, discussion? Do we need to read the caption again?
It's been pulled off consent.
I pulled it off consent.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential, single-family district located at 146 South Noises Park Lane, bearing a legal description of Lot 16, Block 1, Noises Park subdivision, and dealing with related matters.
Okay. I need to call for a motion to adopt the, not second reading again.
Okay. I make that motion.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Item, uh, next items are three, are the consent agenda items 3A and C through L. Is, is there a motion to adopt, uh-
A motion to adopt.
Consent to items 3A and C through L.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item four is consideration of possible action, uh, to select highest ranking firm and authorize city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for architectural engineering services for project management pursuant to RFQ number 2021-06 for the Harlingen multi-modal transit terminal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Um, this item is to request a selection of an architectural and engineering firm by the City Commission for the design of the Harlingen multi-modal transit terminal. A workshop was hosted last Friday to allow the highest ranking firms, uh, to present their proposals for your consideration. The preliminary rankings have been included in your packets, and the final rankings are, are essentially ultimately the ball under the purview of the City Commission. And so once again, this is an action item to select, uh, a firm and authorize the, the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for design services and project management.
And do you have a PowerPoint, or do you have a, um, a thing on your screen that we can see? Because I don't have that in my package.
Neither do I.
I don't think Frank does either.
I don't.
I'm sorry, I do not have a PowerPoint. Um, but I can get the-
Are these, are these the same rankings that, that were presented at the budget workshop? I mean, at the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I thought that when we had that, that workshop, that we had discussed, um, talking to, um, Dan, remind me, those two companies that, the ones I mentioned that were, um, the top one and the bottom one, it was Abel.
It was EXP, uh, and it was Able City, Genac, and Negrete.
It was Genac. I thought we, I thought we were going to mostly look at Genac and-
So at this point, it's pretty, what we're looking from the city council is, uh, we, they've made presentations to the city commission, because that's at the request of the commission.
Right.
Uh, at this point, we just need the ranking. How would you want to rank them, in what order? Uh, and the city staff would take the highest ranked firm and start negotiations?
Well, if you're asking me for a ranking, I, I had Genac as number one, and then Abel as number two. Because the ranking, and my justification on that ranking was, I'm, like I was telling Mike during the workshop, is I'm giving a lot of, um, thought into what the staff is saying and how they do it. Um, when you get down to the real, um, the performance issues and, and, and whether they can do it or not, and, and their experience, those are the top two companies, uh, based on those numbers. Not whether they filled out an application correctly or they're missing information, but when you get to the actual performance of it. So I would, I would suggest that we, uh, we would, uh, have instructed Dan to start talking. I had Genac as number one, y'all may feel differently, and, and if they, the, they don't negotiate that to go to a, a second one. I thought that was Abel, but, but you may have a different ranking.
I like Genac, because I like how they were, when they were doing the presentation, they were saying how they were going to, um, future-proof it.
Right.
How they were going to, you know, get it ready, not for what's, for what we need right now, but for what we're going to need in the future. And to me, that, that, that was good. That, that's ideally what I, I believe we would want in, in our transport. We want it to be able to be, you know, we don't want it to go out of style, or, you know what I mean.
Okay. But we need a rank, do we need a ranking?
Yes, sir. Uh, the top two, at least, that way staff can start with number one.
Okay. So it-
I tell you what. I'm in favor of, uh, Able City. Okay? Part of the reason is because they've done a water, uh, wastewater treatment plant in La Redo. If we need one of those, we have something that we can go back to. Secondly, the main thing is, they've, they have gotten $1.5 billion in grant funding. So they're doing something right. They've also been able to work with US and state leaders, as well as US and customs, uh, US and Mexican customs. We have a little bridge down there, it was, that, that we need to, uh, address. So maybe I'm looking too much into the future, but that's something that I would be very interested into looking into somewhere down the line.
I, well, I agree with that experience, but I'm trying, for the building of this concept, or what we want to provide, I think, uh, again, and Abel was ranked, to me, was ranked highly by two of our, two of our judges.
Correct.
Right? Or our staff members. So, um, I'm comfortable with however the, the commission wants to go, but I really like to look at those two as the top two.
So, so what we're looking for is just the top two, in, in order of priority, number one, number two, and so that we can start with negotiating with number one.
So as far as my, I like Genac.
What do you think, Mike?
Okay.
The, the list had EXP as number one, and then for number two was a tie with Negrete and Kohler and Gignac and Associates.
Right. Yes. I didn't agree with those, and that was what he's asking us.
So you want to just go by that? Like, I'm just asking, like, what are your suggestions?
You know, these were ranked by engineers, and it's an engineering project. I, I trust staff.
Well, I, I like the motion that, that we, um, no, I didn't see, I considered to have Genac-
That we rank?
Rank Genac number one and Abel number two.
And authorize city manager to negotiate a contract.
To negotiate that, if you cannot come with the terms with the first one, you jump to the second one and bring that back to the conference.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The motion carries, uh, Genac is a-
Thank you.
Has a Harlingen office, and those folks are, you know, I think that's a, I think that's a real plus. All right. Uh, item five is consideration and possible action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year 2021, 2022, schedule two public hearings to be held Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, at 5:30 PM, and Wednesday, September 22nd, at 5:30 PM.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Uh, the Texas Tax Code requires that when a proposed tax rate exceeds a non-revenue rate, uh, the taxing unit must vote on the proposed rate, record the vote, and schedule one public hearing on the proposed, uh, tax rate. Uh, so in the current year, for 2022, 2021, 2022, the tax rate being proposed is .619849, which does exceed the non-revenue tax rate of, of .612828, but does not exceed the voter approval rate of .628713. So we are asking to, uh, schedule two public hearings, one on September 15th and one on September 22nd, and to post the notice of the tax rates on the website.
That would be a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation.
A motion to adopt the staff's recommendations for these two meetings.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Uh, unless anybody sees any, uh, unless anybody's got an objection to this, let's go ahead and go back to, um, the TMRS item, which is item 20, consideration of possible action. We don't have it. Consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance adopting-
20?
Service codes. There's no, no, I'm sorry, there is an executive session.
Item 19, 19 and 20?
All right. We'll hold, then we'll hold off. Unless we want to do-
Well, there's an executive session item.
Before we go to executive session, would it be possible to do number 13?
13. Okay. Item 13, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance of first reading for a special election to be held in the City of Harlingen, May 7th, 2022, on the question of amending its Home World Charter to provide for term limits for the offices of Mayor and City Commissioners, resolving other matters incident and related to such election, and declaring an effective date.
Okay. I wanted to mention that, uh, previously, this is the, about the-
The item was tabled, so we need a motion to remove it from the table.
I have a motion to remove it, or to untable it.
Is there a second?
I seconded it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. We have, uh, the item is removed from the table.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment on that, because I know this is about the sixth time that the term limits has been on the agenda. Last time, there was some, you know, debate on, I had proposed the nine, you know, three terms for three, I had proposed three, a limit of three terms, three years, a total of nine years. But I know during the last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Puente that said that he wanted a, five terms, which would have been 15 years. I thought that was a little bit too much, but recently, we went to that retreat, and we got to know a little bit more. I thought that was a very good retreat, and I know one of the things that they pushed a lot during the retreat was compromise. And I'm a firm believer in compromise. So what I asked the, Allison and Rick to do is that to go ahead and compromise, instead of having the agenda item, or the, the ordinance to have for three terms for three years, which a total of nine, compromise between nine and 15 would be 12. So now it would be four terms for three years with a maximum of 12 years. And that's what I'm proposing now. Like I said, this has been on the agenda about five times. We've gotten information about it, and this, remember, I just want to point out, is that we are not making the decision to, on term limits. That decision's going to belong to the people of Harlingen. This is just for us to put it on the ballot. And I noticed what you said earlier, Mike, you said you're for the people. Well, I hope I can count on your vote, because this is for the people. This is for giving the people a choice. So I'm hoping you follow through with that, and with your model that you said that you're for the people, and let's give the people a choice here in Harlingen.
You know, it's interesting how, why the term limits was put on the president was because the, since 1900, the second worst president was FDR.
That's your opinion? He was usually ranked, actually, the number three, and I know this because I'm a history teacher.
Because he, you know, he caused the depression to deepen, not once, but twice, and he ran for four elections, and many of his rules were unconstitutional. But, so I, I just find that amusing. But we do, we do have term limits, they're called elections, and before Frank Morales won here, 60% of the elections recently were lost by the incumbents, showing that the voters do vote, and that being an incumbent is not a powerhouse. And so we do have term limits, they're called elections every three years.
Not, not really, because incumbency comes with its own benefits, and also, I'm glad you mentioned 60%, because I would also mention how in McKellen, it passed by 90% in, in, over there in Brownsville, passed by 86%. So this is not a controversial thing. This is something that people overwhelmingly.
Are you finished? Or are you?
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike, I apologize.
And then you get a chance to get.
I recently read a book about the madness of crowds, and how people go mad in large numbers. And so just because one city does something and another city does it, doesn't mean it's necessarily good. Public opinion swells, and it wanes, it waxes, and it wanes.
Commissioner, I, I'm going to tell you right now that I've, I've always been against it, everybody's asked me about against it, and I fortunately didn't, was not able to attend that retreat, but I'm also one to compromise. And, 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 and the more I thought about it, if you're going to offer 12-year, it's four terms, I, I think that's a, that's a compromise I'm willing to take, and I'm going to, I will, I will second your motion.
Okay, I make a motion to approve it, second?
I second.
So.
Yeah, you know, I think you've been very generous in, in saying, you know, this isn't a referendum on me, and that this is their, and I, and I appreciate that.
Sir, how old will you be in 12 years? No.
And you've also, and you know, and you've also said that obviously this takes effect after, once the, you know, so, so it wouldn't affect anybody up here who wants to run for reelection. But I do want to, I just want to say a couple of things, a few observations. One is, at the local level, this isn't a career. So I, after the, somebody at the last meeting mentioned that term limits prevents this from being a career, makes it public service, makes it public service. So I went home that night, and I took my $250 check, less withholding, to my wife, and said, honey, this is a bad career choice. It's a great public service choice, but it's a bad career choice, because at the local level, we don't get paid. You get paid a hundred or $150 a month, and, and the mayor gets $250 a month. So it's not a career. It's, it's all about public service, and that's all it's about. You, you made a great presentation, and I thought it was very, very well thought out, and I wanted to congratulate you on that. It's sort of underscored for me, though, the, the fact that by showing that there are different options, we're really choosing for the, for the public which option is the best. And really, the best option is to let them choose the option by choosing every election, whether they want to reelect somebody for two terms, or three terms, or four terms, or more, or none, or not reelect them, which, as Commissioner Mesmar pointed out, incumbents do, don't, don't get reelected. Mayor Martinez is a good example of that, he had two terms in Brownsville, and he was not, he was not reelected. Othel Brand for 20 years, and McAllen was not reelected, and Roberto Salinas, submission after a long time, and office was not reelected, lost election. So incumbency really does not guarantee your reelection. So with those points, just, just for those, that food for thought, I'll, I'll conclude my remarks.
Can I say one last thing?
Term limits.
Okay. I just want to point out is that we are not, the city commission, by taking this vote, we're not putting term limits on, on, on the elected officials. We don't have that power. What we're doing is basically giving you, the people of Harlingen, that choice. So ultimately, you guys, like each, most of us here have different opinions on, as you can tell, we have different opinions on term limits. But once it's on the ballot, each and every single one of us, on May 7, 2022, on that election, we'll be able to go to the ballot, we'll be able to vote yea or nay on term limits. And whatever the people of Harlingen decide, whether they want term limits, or they're against it, hey, the people have spoken, and that's all I want, okay? That's all, I want to give the people the choice.
Commissioner Uribe at the last meeting suggested putting all three of them on the, on the ballot, and seeing if.
If we do that, I researched that, and I, and I looked at how, I've, as you can tell, I've taken, this has been my baby, so I've taken in a lot of research from all the different, the way the cities have done it, and no other city really puts out that, because it, it can dilute the vote, and then you have to get like more than 50%. So that's the, the job of the legislative body. We come up with, okay, this is what they, this is what we're going to offer, if they want it, they take it, if they don't, like, again, we're not putting on term limits.
You want to give the voters training wheels, essentially.
Yeah, you made a good point, and Richard does too, is you just said a minute ago, let the citizens decide that, so why don't we put all three proposals and let them decide?
If we put it, if we put all three, that's going to dilute it, that, that's, that's what happened there. If you can show me one place where they've done that, they've never done that, Frank, they've never done that.
We should set presidents and let them decide, that's.
I want to, I want to bring something to your attention, a measure that's going to go on the ballot as proposition. It has to be such that you can vote for one, and vote, you can vote yes on one and yes on another, without having to vote yes on one and no on the others. That's in the Texas Local Government Code. So that's why whatever you put on, it's got to be able to stand alone, and you need to be able to, if you have other propositions on there, those should be able to be voted yes or no, without having to vote yes or no on the previous. So it has to be decided really.
I think you keep it simple, and again, it's a great, I thought it was, it's a compromise. 15 years is really not a term limit, and, and I understand the hesitancy on the, on the, on the three-year term, so 12 years is 12 years, and it's not going to start till 2024, is that the thing?
And what you've had right now doesn't count against you.
Either they're going to vote for it, or they're not going to vote for it, and it gets people out to vote, you know?
Okay, so we already have the motion to vote, so we vote.
All right, any other, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, let's go down to, are we going to go into a second session? Item 16, is the, are the airport guys here?
Did you have to read it? I'm sorry.
The airport's downstairs, sir.
Is Mark here? Mayor, they didn't, they didn't read it?
All right, item 16, item A is the attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice to the city commission pertaining to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the 2020 census, and possible, possible impact. Hang on a second. Is our Eagle Scout project here?
Mayor, they didn't read the ordinance, they have to read the ordinance.
Item 13.
Which, which one?
The term limits.
Item 13.
Item 10, is the Eagle, is Mr. Gonzalez here?
Mayor, are you understanding what we're saying?
I'll go back, all right, go back on the, you're going to read the caption, all right, so we go back to item 13.
Okay.
Please read the caption of the ordinance.
An ordinance calling for a special election to be held in the city of Harlingen on May 7, 2022, on the question of amending its home rule charter to provide for term limits for the offices of mayor and city commissioners, resolving other matters, incident, and related to such election, and declaring an effective date.
Do we have to vote again, or that first vote would be good?
Okay, now, now we need another.
Do we have to vote again, or? Okay.
Okay, we need another motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like, sign. All right, motion carries. I do want to take up the Eagle Scout service project, item number 10, before we go into executive session. Item 10 is the consideration, possible action of a proposal from Boy Scout Marcos J. Gonzalez, who will fund and construct improvements at Hugh Ramsey Nature Park as part of his Eagle Scout project. Marcos, go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm really nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Well, don't be, because all these guys up here are really, really nice.
The only one you have to worry about, not just.
Okay.
No, you're fine.
If you can handle everybody here, you're border, you're going to sail through your border.
My Eagle's, my Eagle Scout project will be to plan, create, assemble, and install a bridge that will allow passage through a part of a local nature park, Hugh Ramsey, that gets covered by water at certain times of the year due to inclement weather. The bridge will be beneficial to Hugh Ramsey Nature Park and Harlingen Parks and Recreation, because it'll be filling a need, which is, to my knowledge, had been pending for quite some time, and will allow people to explore the park, and also promote the preservation of the park.
Okay, we have, we have some diagram, we have your presentation in the, in the packet. Javier, is anything you want to say about the project?
I think this is a great project, Mayor, and we appreciate Marcos bringing it to, to the city, and wanting to take this on.
All right, is there a motion to approve Mr. Gonzalez's proposal for his Eagle Scout project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. We look forward to seeing its completion, and, and your completion of your Eagle badge. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right, now back to item 13, 16, rather. A, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice to the city commission pertaining to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the 2020 census, and possible impact on the city's voting district boundaries, and related legal matters. B, consultation pursuant to section 551.074, Texas Government Code, to deliberate the appointment, employment duties, and other terms and conditions of the employment agreement between city manager Dantzena and the city of Harlingen, Texas. C, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.0712, the Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and counsel, connection with the city's rights, duties, and privileges, obligations, connection with the employment contract with the city of Harlingen, city manager, and related legal matters. D, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and counsel, connection with the pending litigation style, numbered Ruben Arpania, Sr., and Oliver, City of Harlingen, Texas, Civil Action Number 120, CB0163, and related settlement communications. E, attorney consultation pursuant to 551.0712, Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's legal duties and obligations regarding TMRS. And F, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the lawsuit style, numbered Sun Valley Aviation versus Harlingen, cost number 2021, DCL 02730-G, for, for traditional district, Cameron County, Texas, including consideration of some of the proposals. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be in executive session, talking to our attorneys regarding various legal matters. We'll return and conclude the rest of the agenda once we're done with that. Thank you. Okay, we're out of executive session at 8:33 PM, and we're going to go to item 18, discussion and possible action regarding the city manager's contract.
Just make a motion to accept.
To accept the, the contract as modified, as proposed by the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is to accept the amendments to the contract as proposed by the city attorney. Is there a second?
I second it.
Did I hear a second?
Frank.
Yes.
Any others, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the amendments are approved. Item 21, consider an appropriate action, if any, with respect to affirmation of long-term real estate lease between the city of Harlingen and Sun Valley Aviation, and a resolution of lawsuit style, numbered SVA versus Harlingen, cost number 2021, DCL 2730-G. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right. The lease is not approved. Item 19, consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to re-enroll the city of Harlingen in the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
I make a motion to approve, to, to re-enroll the city of Harlingen in the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
Second.
Okay, you second it.
Okay, is there, well, is there a discuss, is there a discussion? Do you have more questions from the TMRS guys?
Yeah, I.
I believe there was public comment. I think there was public comment.
Well, the, did you sign up?
I did, sir, I went online, and I, I did do the online.
Amanda, did you have any other people sign up for public comment?
You're on mute, Amanda.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue? All right, sir, come on, come on up, identify yourself, state your name and your residence, and your, and your residence address.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Benitez, and I've got an address just side of the city, but also own a property here on the 800 block of South Villanueva. And without beating a dead horse or taking up too much of your time, number one, thank you guys for coming out here, thank you for giving us the opportunity. Going back to the TMRS, right, I know we've kind of beat this horse around a little bit the last few years. We've, we've talked about this before, we've talked about this amongst ourselves, what the pros and cons are. 99% of us, those of us that are one-to-one at PD are for this, we want this. We understand that the city has to sacrifice to get us there, but we need this. We had our chief recruiting officer here, who just stepped out a little while ago, but, you know, if, if no one's told you guys, I will tell you. Our issues, right, our retention issues are not because they think we have ugly uniforms or ugly police cars, or they hate the city, right? I will tell you, the first thing you ask some of these guys is, hey, how come you're not sticking around, you know, 10, 15 years? They say, well, the pay sucks, and retirement sucks, right? We just had one guy, we just picked him up, they just swore in February, he's on his way to Los Fresnos, right? Hasn't even hit the streets yet, hasn't even gone to training yet, he's out of here, he's on his way to Los Fresnos, we just got his uniform on, right? We've discussed this, we, we, we need this back, right? We keep putting a, a Band-Aid on this, on this issue, and it's time we need, we, we get to the bottom of it, we need to fix it, right? And I'm telling you, you know, we, we ask our guys, right, what's more important to you, is it quality or quantity, right? I'd rather have a quality officer here all day long, and view as citizens, I'm pretty sure they'll agree. Those are our two biggest issues as to why we're having a big turnaround. All of our officers are leaving to other agencies. Now, we understand that we will never be able to complete, compete with federal or state, right? But if, if we get where we can make it a little more lucrative for them to stay, right, then, then we'll have guys thinking about sticking around. You ask any of our guys right now, anybody who's been here 15 years or less, hey, where do you see yourself in 10 years, five years from now? I'm telling you, most of them are not staying in City of Harlingen. So that's all I got, and I appreciate you guys giving us some time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other, is there any other discussion, or any questions more for the TMRS folks that are here?
No, I, I'm just going to say, this is similar to the golf course. We take hundreds of thousands of dollars and put it into a golf course for the benefit of relatively few people versus providing drainage or paving roads for 80,000 people. Here we go again, we're going to take a couple million dollars a year, and we're going to have unfunded liabilities of millions and millions of dollars down the road, which is going to affect the city bond rating, and we're going to have to raise taxes in order to pay those obligations, and these are millions of dollars, not going to drainage, not going into paving streets, but taking, benefiting 80,000 people, except benefiting the few hundred city employees.
I have, I have comments. First off, as usual, you use the doomsday figures, that, you know, the world's going to end, Chicken Little, kind of thing. I think this is the, he's a police officer, the, these are police officers, this is, they're telling us what we need, they risk their lives each and every single day out there for us, and I think this is the least that we can do, is provide them this benefit that they can have, they could provide for themselves, for their family, and also, this also goes to also the quality of life in Harlingen. Here in Harlingen, we're losing a lot of our quality officers. They just said right now that recruiting officers said the, would have said the same thing. We're losing a lot of quality officers, because first off, it's about our families.
May I answer a question to the officer? If you can come back up. I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is your, your willingness to go back into TMRS because of the two-to-one match, is that the only, is that the only?
Absolutely, sure, my plan, I'm staying here.
So if, if you had the option under the current plan, to, that we, we raised our, our contributions to that, where you're able to match, see, one of the issues I have with TMRS, and I brought TMRS a couple of years ago to it.
Sure.
But when I started looking at the actual financial impact that would do, right? And I, I think the benefits you lose by not having TMRS, is again, not having access to your money. There was a gentleman, the last meeting, that says, you know, they, they had people with a house being foreclosed on, and an officer saying, hey, man, I, I need some of my money. TMRS told him, I'm sorry, can't help you.
Sure.
And that's, that's, that's fine. And then, if you pass away, I understand it, and this is a question, that, that all the city's contributions to that go back to the TMRS? Now, as opposed to, and what I'd like to do is in, what I want to look at, if the city would consider matching or increasing the contribution for it, because then you have control, more control over your investment, you're able to have access to that. If, God forbid, you have a medical emergency, you have to do something, you go access your money, then you get to do that. And I kind of wanted to see in the question I was asking and asking in the whole session, you know, if you were to take a five-year sample, 10-year sample, 20-year sample, of these two plans in equal, if, and you started in 2000, and we're in 2021, what would your plans have been?
So I'm glad that you asked this, sir, because that's another thing we've brought up, right? I will tell you, right? Us.
Let me finish my thought, because I'm thinking.
Sure.
So, and then what is to prevent, you know, turnover? You're in a very dangerous job. I think you're always going to have turnover, unfortunately. I think we have a great city, I think it's a great city, I'm very proud to support you guys in every chance I get, right? But what is to stop you from leveraging tenure part of it and say, well, you know, you still go to Los Fresnos because you still, you don't lose anything by going to Los Fresnos or to anybody else that would have TMRS, and you have, however those credit works or whatever, I think we still lose people. Because if you can't, I've said this all the time, you're going to work for the city, unfortunately, you're not going to make a lot of money.
Right.
You're not. You're going to really love what you do, right? And unfortunately, you guys, and I've always said you all don't pay enough, I wish we could pay you more, right? But there's, I'm biggest supporter of equipment you need, and I get that. This would, I think, the way I understand it, would put, at this point right now, would put us in a really bad financial situation, right? And all those things I want to do for you all, and like Commissioner Mazmar saying about drainage and streets and everything else, we got a budget, you know, Dan's every year having to cut, you know, seven, eight, nine million dollars out of a budget. And it's very frustrating for me to hear you guys, here's a list I need, Dan, and right away, hey, man, it doesn't even meet the numbers, so you've got to make tough decisions, I can't do this, I can do this, I can do this. So by the time, what you, as a police department, present to us is very much different than what was needed, right? And if we go into a worse situation, what is that going to look like? Are we going to have to downsize our size of our office? I don't know what that's going to do. And I'm always trying to be as fiduciary, make sure we take care of fiduciary responsibilities, and those are very hard to do, as much as I love you guys and support you guys. I think, as far as an investment part, you know, it's your money, and having access to your money, and the fact that anybody in your family under your current plan would get your, you know, if you're a single dad or single mom or whatever, you get whoever is, then they get your full benefit, because you're invested in day one with the current program. You, with TMRS, you don't have that option. And again, that lifespan and that, your career span is very short, unfortunately. So that's what my question was, is that have we even looked at the options, the possibility of creating that two-to-one or increasing our matching with the current company that would give them a better investment? Because I understand the money part, I do. But the issue I have of it is the financial part of the liability we're going to have to assume. Okay? I'm sorry.
Were you going to say, you were going to say something, correct?
Well, I was going to tell the commissioner, I'm glad that you brought that up, as far as the pulling the money out and stuff like that, we just had an incident like that. So we have an officer, right, where he or she is close to their 20-year mark, they're one-to-one, pulled out their entire retirement for whatever their personal reasons were, right? And now do not have a retirement. So what does that mean? That means they have to continue working to build their retirement back up. Had we had TMRS, right, although they pulled their retirement system, they would have still received something at their retirement time, they would have still been receiving.
But they would have been taxed. Again, you lose all the city's contributions.
Right.
For the length of 20 years, right? And then they may get a small stipend, but they sure as hell didn't get all of it, right? And in my opinion, if that was me, I already would have gotten my full money I've been investing the last 19 years, then get a thousand dollars a month or whatever it'd been, the small benefit it would have been for the rest of the life, you know what I'm saying? So that's not a very good example, that almost backs up my concerns with that. My issue is, God forbid something happened, we're not in a perfect world, that you lose everything you think you have, and at the last minute, phooop, they pulled away from you. I don't like that, I really don't. I think you all, and again, I understand the investment part, I do, your money, you want to build your money. So I would ask, that we would consider, you know, under our current plan, and that needs to get looked at, of if we increase our contributions, right, and you're talking about compromise, I mean, why not run the numbers? And really, maybe see if that works.
Did you have anything else to add?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Sorry, thank you.
I noticed, did any, from TMRS, did you guys have any kind of feedback for what the commissioner was saying about losing the contributions or anything like that?
May not.
Oh, yes, please.
I would like to point out, Commissioner, that there was one statement that you made that for a member who passed away, or there was a scenario that you gave where the member's money would be the only thing paid out, that there would be no match, the city's match would go back to the city, you said.
It goes back into your pool, right? Is that correct? That's the way I understood it. That's the way it was presented to me the last time, right? If, God forbid, they have an untimely death, right, do they lose their benefit?
If you have a vested member here at the City of Harlingen who passes away, the money that the city has paid into the system, those city matching dollars, they're still there for the beneficiary.
How long does it take to invest, five years?
Five years.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I'm talking about a short term. Let's say they're not, because what I said was, that under the current plan, they're invested since day one.
Okay, then we are.
So let's say they don't, and they leave the program, right, they quit, they lose their retirement, don't they? Under your plan, because they're not fully invested.
They don't.
It's like the NFL, the NFL running back is like two years. You know, that after five years in the NFL, they're fully invested, they can retire, they get a hundred thousand dollars a year the rest of their life. But you know where the NFL does that? Because not everybody makes it, there's a very, very, very small percentage of people, players that gets that five-year market. And it's almost, and again, it may work with other city employees, but that job they have is very dangerous and very volatile, and we do have high turnover. You know, and I don't necessarily think that it's just because of our retirement, there are other factors.
Well, Commissioner, I will point out, as I said in my statements earlier, whatever time the employee has on the books today with the City of Harlingen, if they've already worked for five years, day one, they're vested in TMRS. They pass away, whatever dollars the city has matched, that is part of that benefit for that member, for his beneficiary, and would be the monies that are entitled to the beneficiary to convert to whatever the payout would be in the scenario that you've painted there.
And how about if they retire early?
What was that?
If they retire early?
If they retire early, any retirement from TMRS is going to take into account both the monies from the member and from the city. Now, what you're talking about is if you get someone who has not paid in to TMRS for very long, the longer you pay in, the larger the balance, the more the benefit. I mean, if you're talking about of scale, you're talking about a smaller benefit, but from day one, if a vested member in TMRS passes away or retires, we're talking about the city's matching dollars being used to help pay that benefit.
And if they retire early, is that when it gets taken away? Let me ask it this way, when is it that you take away?
The only way that.
The city's contribution to that plan?
The only way that the city match is lost would be if you have an employee who terminates from the city and decides he wants to refund his account. If he refunds the account, he's not retiring, then in that scenario, he only gets the monies that he's paid in, the monies that the city has set aside for him, assuming that he was going to continue working long enough to become vested. Now, those monies do stay in the city's pool in that scenario.
And with the other program, they get to keep that, correct? Under the same scenario?
I can't speak to the other, to the other, to the other program.
And I want to make, I want to make a point on the other plan, like we said, like I mentioned this during the workshop, on the other plan, once that money's out.
Were you finished, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Once the money's out, it's out. But with this one, it's a lifetime thing, that they're going to get paid, and then they can also pass it on to the beneficiaries. So I understand your point of view, and then also, what they said earlier in the workshop is if they come in, and like right now, we have the other program, the 401K that we have right now, I don't know if you were, I don't know if you were here yet for that one, what they said was that they would start off with TMRS, but then, because I know one of your points was that they couldn't borrow off it, right? So the 401K they have right now, that would still, they would still have it available, and they could borrow off that 401K and still continue with the TMRS. So that option of being able to borrow off, they would still have the 401K that they had originally. So there's still an avenue for them to borrow off that way. But ultimately, I think this is, again, this is just my opinion, and we all vote how we want, but my opinion is that this is beneficial for the city, and I think it's worth the sacrifice, because I think our employees are worth the sacrifice.
And the sacrifice being, what is your understanding of the sacrifice?
I'm sorry?
What is your understanding of the sacrifice?
The understanding of the sacrifice is, I understand the unfunded liability, I understand that. And then, but if you look at this, you're talking about.
Then that's where I came in, I think we stopped there. Please, what is the example, we have a $600,000 unfunded liability now, and if we do this, it's going to go to four million or two million? Or what is it, what is the number?
Well, if you go with the zero, if you go with no service credit, it's $1,927,000. You go with 50% service credits, it's four and a half million, 75% service credits, it's 6.2 million, and 100% service credits, it's eight million.
Okay, so what are you recommending, the zero, the half, or the 100%?
I had a question, because you said that you could do something called ad hoc. So say we were to go with 50%.
Yes.
And then we could go and reevaluate it again to maybe go up, or how did that work?
The ad hoc adoption, whenever we say that, we mean that the city has adopted the provision on a one-time basis.
Okay.
So the updated service credit, just to refresh a bit, that is the provision that would grant the additional cash credit. It basically is looking retroactively to catch up for any improvements that have been in place or have taken place over the 14 years that your workforce has not gotten any improvement in the retirement benefit that is directly due to improvements in salaries that have happened. Or it could have been plan improvements, but in the scenario that we have here at Harlingen, your seven-two-one plan, so it would be related directly to salary improvements that have taken place over the last 14 years, that there have been no ad hoc or any type of updated service credits granted to employees who are still in the system. If you adopt that one-time ad hoc, you would have available, or future commissions would have available to it, the chance to revisit to see if you would ever want to adopt that provision again.
So you're wanting to go, again, two million, four million, or eight million?
An unfunded liability?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Which one?
I don't know, I don't want to just be myself, what are you going to think? I know some of you are not for it, I would say, because I just want to make sure, because I want to reiterate.
And I do want to, may I add this, and maybe I didn't say it clearly enough at the outset. One of the more responsible features of TMRS is going to be that for any unfunded actuarial accrued liability that you have, we have a fixed amortization schedule to ensure that that amount, that unfunded liability, will be fully funded. And what you're talking about, you see the amortization schedule.
Do we have to pay interest on that? Do we pay interest on that?
I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that?
Do we, if we have to pay back the unfunded liability to you, do we pay interest on that?
Well, for every year that you haven't fully funded it, yes, there's interest that's accruing.
Borrowing money.
There's interest that's accruing.
So if it's $30 million for the unfunded liability, it's like, we get to pay you back.
What is your current interest rate that you're charging on unfunded liabilities?
Well, what you're looking at each year, we've got a 6.75% assumed rate of return on our investments.
And you return 5% last year.
And one of the points that you brought up in the earlier session in the budget workshop had to do with what about the interest credit that's granted to the employees, the 5%? That's a 5% guarantee, that's the floor, regardless of what happens in the overall investments.
What is the interest rate that we, that the city would have to pay on unfunded liabilities to you?
What you're looking at, this is a level dollar percentage if you adopt, if you adopt an ad hoc.
What is the interest rate that we have to pay you on unfunded liabilities?
Commissioner, it's 6.75%.
We have to pay 6.75% on unfunded liabilities?
Yes.
When the 30-year bond, government bond, is under 2%, that's highway robbery.
Considering that, and your question earlier, what was the interest rate earned by the city last year? Members were guaranteed 5%, they received 5%. Last year, our returns to the city account was 13-plus percent.
But they were, you, it's only accredited to the employees of 5%.
That's correct.
So you could make, you could make 110%, but you're still paying the employees 5% and everything else is gravy to you.
We can pay, we can lose 40% and the employees are.
So on an $8 million unfunded liability, we have to pay 6.75% interest when long-term, because it's based on actuarial table of a lifespan of roughly, let's say, 82 years of a person's life existence, and so then, we're paying an arm and a leg versus current interest rates.
For this particular provision that you're looking at in this study, this is an ad hoc adoption.
Yes.
And this is a level dollar, not a percentage, of payroll that you're paying. It's a level dollar, and over the nine years, you would see that unfunded liability go from the 2 million to zero over those nine years.
Actuarially speaking, impossible. Now, I need to make another comment. Commissioner Perez has attacked me three or four times directly by calling me Mr. Gloom or Mr. Doom, and I will say that I work with prudence always. Sometimes I work with rosy scenario, and I was brought up to expect the worst and plan for the best, and that way, I'm never disappointed in life.
Okay. Is there any other, are there any other questions?
It's kind of a negative way to look at life.
Is there, are there any other questions for the gentleman?
No, I move to approve.
We have a motion in a second, I get, I get.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I still get to talk.
I apologize.
May just be the mayor, but I still, I have a voice, thanks.
I apologize.
I just wanted to make, I want to make a couple of things, questions here, comments here. We've already, we've already discussed the unfunded liability, that does, that's going to happen. I mean, you go back into it, and you're going to increase our unfunded liability on our balance sheet from $600,000 to whatever, at the minimum, $2 million. We have an obligation, we serve, we serve both those we lead and we serve both those we serve. So the community and taxpayers, the residents of Harlingen, and the people that we serve, people that we lead, or people like the staff, including our wonderful men and women of Police and Fire Department, certainly, we want to do the very best that we can for them. And we, and I can tell you that we thought we were doing the very best for them in 2007, I think the city was doing the very best for them in 2007, when we decided to exit TMRS because of the situation at the time. And they, since then, said they've made a bunch of changes, I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
I would feel a lot better about going into this if we had not just TMRS here telling us that they've made these changes and it's really been positive, if we had an independent consultant come in here and tell us, you know, about the changes they've made and how that benefits us and how we can feel more confident about it. The final thing I want to say is, is that I just wanted, you know, I deal with evidence, I don't, I'm a lawyer, and I don't, I don't like this, you know, one, you know, I heard this, or I heard that, you know, what's the, you know, what's the evidence, and what's the testimony? The reality is, over the last 18 years, we have, the turnover has been 3.6% of the work of our police force. 91 officers to resign between 2004 and 2021, 48 of them had less than five years of experience, and of those, 24 had less than one year of experience. In total, 142 police officers have resigned or retired the last 18 years with a combined turnover rate of $5. And of those, 24 had less than one year of experience. In total, 142 police officers have resigned or retired the last 18 years, with a combined turnover rate of 5.6%. Nationally, the police turnover rate is 11%. So we shouldn't do this, because people are telling us we have high turnover. We don't. And that's just a fact. That's what the evidence is, and we've gone through this book of exercise five years ago, and I've updated numbers since then. You want to make the decision, because you think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the, and our employees, then by all means. But, but don't make it based upon inaccurate information.
I want to make the decision, because I think it's the right thing to do.
Finally, I'm going to ask you, when you make the motion, to specify which, which one of these plans we're going into, so we'll know what exactly, what the unfunded liability is going to be.
It's two separate items?
Right, right. So item 19 would be the actual enrollment, and then it's in item 20 where you would select the percentage.
Which plan?
Okay.
They had to be two separate ordinances?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Then we'll go to item 19, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance of first reading to reenroll the city of Harlingen, Texas municipal retirement system. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance providing for the participation in the Texas municipal retirement system and the supplemental death benefits fund by the City of Harlingen, Texas, and to make current service and prior service contributions to the city's account in the benefit accumulation fund of the Texas municipal retirement system at the actuarially determined rate of total employee compensation.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Item 20, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance adopting the Texas municipal retirement system updated service credits.
On, on this one, I have a question for Dan. What, city man, what would you recommend, Dan? Like, what would be-
Thank you.
No, we got it, and then that's his job. I'm asking for his opinion.
The, I passed out a spreadsheet showing the different cost scenarios for each option, commissioners. You have the 50% updated service credits. The cost increase to the city is about, overall, between the city, the airport, and the EDC is about $27,000 increase over what we're currently paying between the both plans. But the unfunded liability does increase to $4.5 million. 75% updated service credits, the cost jumps up to $235,000 over what we're currently paying, but the unfunded liability jumps to $6.2 million. And with 100% updated service credits, the cost, the overall cost of pension jumps up $441,000 a year, and the unfunded liability jumps to $7.9 million. So it's really up to the city council on which one should be selected. Trying to stay neutral on this, because I would, I would stand to benefit from this, so I'd rather not make a recommendation.
Well, I believe in compromise.
And that's the right thing to do, because they really shouldn't make, the employees shouldn't make the recommendation.
You're right, you're right. I agree. I completely agree. I'm sorry to put you in that position, Dan. What I would do is talk about compromise. Okay? We talked about compromise, and you guys are worried about the unfunded liability? Okay. Well, then, because we could always come back and change it, right?
In future years, you could.
Yes. Okay. So if we wanted to do that, and you guys are worried about the unfunded liability, and I understand that, I know you guys are, I get your point. So then I would go with the 50% for right now, because that one would be the least amount of unfunded liability. I don't want to do the zero with no service credit.
That would be the least, the zero.
Yeah, I know. I don't want to do the, I know that. I don't want to do the zero. I want to give them at least something, some benefit, because if you start off as a patrolman, and then you move up to like a, you know, sergeant or captain, I mean, you want to get some type of credit for it. So it's like, so I want to give them at least some credit. I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, I would like to give them the 100%, but I understand that you guys are worried about the unfunded liability, and I understand your concerns. So in the spirit of compromise, I would like to go in and recommend the 50%.
We can always go up, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I make a, I'm sorry. I make a motion to go with the 50%.
Is there a second? Okay. Any, any other discussion?
I think if we're going to provide financial stress to the city and financial stress to the taxpayers, go all in.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Do you need me to read the caption?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please do.
An ordinance authorizing and allowing, under the Act governing the Texas municipal retirement system, updated service credits in said system for service performed by qualifying members of such system who presently are members of the City of Harlingen, and establishing an effective date for such actions.
Can we do this next? Do we need a mo, we need a motion and a second?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Okay, we're going to try to wrap up here. Let's go to this last, this 17, which is the status update workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, does that mean you kept my-
Item 17, status update workshop pertaining to 2020 census project, possible impact on voting district boundaries.
What item are we on? I'm sorry.
Please go.
What item are we on?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm assuming that everybody's gotten the handout. If not, I have some extra copies, and I will be brief. Next to defense, the census is probably the most important thing that the federal government does in a democracy, because the census is the basis upon which a democracy allocates political power and federal funds. You recall there in 2010, Texas gained three new congressional districts. And then in 2000, this year, I mean, this decade, we're going to gain two new congressional districts. And every congressional district represents political power and billions of dollars. We've had 24 censuses.
Could I get a copy of that, please?
Oh, yes.
I'll get them.
I've got six copies in case.
It's okay.
I'm still on the first page. We've had 24 censuses since the beginning of the republic, and every census is conducted between April and October of the decade year, 2000, 2010, 2020. In those eight months, the federal government tries to count every person in America down to the block level. This last decade, this last census, April and October of 2020, is the first in 24 censuses that we had a major pandemic going on during those eight months. Major pandemic. And also, there was a lot of demagoguery of non-citizens getting deported, so a lot of people were afraid to fill out any federal forms. So that factual reality created enormous problems for the Census Bureau. They couldn't send census takers to the local communities to count. They couldn't get people to fill out the forms. So here we are, because of that, here we are in August, and we still do not have the 2020 census data. We usually, we should have had it since back in April, and here we are, we still don't have it, and the elections are going to be looming. However, a few months ago, the Census Bureau released what they call ACS data, which stands for American Community Services. And that ACS data was taken in 19, 2019. That data was released so that we could start thinking about the redistricting, and I've taken that data and applied it to your districts to give you a sense of where it looks like it's going, okay? And the first, the table that I have, the first table that you have, these tables are broken down into two tables in each space, because there's two federal laws that regulate redistricting. One is the one-person-one-vote rule, equal protection clause, and the second one is the Federal Voting Rights Act, which basically says when you redistrict, you cannot redistrict in such a way that it discriminates against racial minorities. Applying the ACS data to your existing districts shows that District 5 is the fastest growing. It's got 14,000 people. And District 4 appears to be the lowest populated one. And the ideal is 12,900. And it looks like Districts 1 and 3 are pretty close, so you may not even have to change this. Again, this is ACS data, their estimates. It's not the actual data. The way you figure out the deviation is you get the highest, and you subtract the lowest, and we have 3,400 people. You divide that by the ideal, and we have a 27% deviation, which means it's an unconstitutional plan at this particular point. Now, I did take the ACS data and drew what I call a demonstration plan. This is just a demonstration plan to show you how this can be remedied and will be remedied. This is not a plan that I'm suggesting, you are the ones who decide how to draw the plan. And as you can see, I moved some population around, and I lowered the deviation to 9.9% by moving population basically from 5 into 2 and 4. And attached to our maps that show that demonstration plan basically moves population from 5 into 4, and from 4 into 2, 1 and 2, 1 and 3 are not, are not touched at all. Again, these are just hypothetical districts. When the data comes out, and I have the good news is, we're going to have the census data by the end of this month, and I will plug it in, give you the actual numbers, and then you can decide how you want to change the districts. That's basically all I have, Mayor, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And when will the final data come? More or less? What date?
I am being told by the Census Bureau-
September.
16th of August, which means the providers and the actual, you have to put them in computers and all that, probably be by the end of the month. The state's going to have August, September, and October to redraw everything in time for the primaries in November. It's going to be a nightmare, but the elections are coming.
So in theory, August 16.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to see you again.
We've been working with you to complete this process, and I know you have all this stuff on computer, and you just like to imagine if you can move it all around.
When I send you the report with the actual data, I can bring you up on my Zoom, and we can redraw the districts the way you want to draw them, right there in front of you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So I think we can go back to item 6, consideration possible action to award RFQ 2021-12 professional engineering services for the City of Harlingen, HUC 10 flood protection planning study to a professional engineering firm registered in the state of Texas, who has demonstrated competence and authority, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with such firm.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item before you tonight is our regional flood protection planning study. It's a very significant study for not only the city, but the region. We'll be definitely reaching out with all the stakeholders within the watershed, basically studies the Arroyo watershed from Mercedes to, to the outfall. We received five original RFQ solicitations for this project. One of the firms subsequently elected not to pursue the project. So we, we held live, in-person presentations with the evaluation committee and the four remaining firms, and we got a ton of great, great data, a lot of, a lot of good presentations, and, you know, just, just a lot of, a lot of good input on this project. So we subsequently ranked the, the firms based on the individual evaluators, and based on that, we, we came together with an aggregate evaluation score, scoring the firms in the order of Half &amp; Associates, Civil Systems Engineering, SHIBI Consulting, and KCI Technologies. So we're requesting to begin negotiations with the highest-ranked firm and move forward from there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
What was the first one?
The first one is Half &amp; Associates.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to motion that I wanted to use CES as our number one, because in my opinion, the way I looked at it, they had the most experience in the end, if you look at the tools they have available to them, and, and the top, the fact, I think they've already done the study, or most of this, some of the work that's being asked, they've already, they're already done. Is that correct?
So I can't answer for them, but I-
Civil Systems did complete our master drainage study in 2008.
Right. And a lot of that is going to be needed in this plan, correct?
A lot of that data would be-
Yes, but it's updating, and, but it's already been done.
Yes. And I will also state for the record that the rankings that the staff has put together, those are preliminary rankings, with the final decision being the city commission.
Right. So I wanted to motion to use CES as our number one, and do the same thing that we did earlier, that let Dan negotiate with them, and they can't come up with an agreement with a contract, then you negotiate with number two, which would be the Half, Half Associates.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
So the one he's, the one he wants, whether is it ranked right now?
Number two, sir.
Number two.
I really don't know. I would ask that you rank the top two, Commissioners? Because if, if negotiations fail with the first, staff can move on to the second.
Here's my, my, my point with it. That firm did the study back in, which is a major study back in 2008.
Yeah, I'm aware of it.
They spent a million on it. So as opposed to updating information, redoing it, and retooling it, and this is a regional thing that we pull, we're going to pull in all kinds of, it's a big thing. Why would we go back to someone that hasn't done it and have to start with square one? And I believe that one of the gentlemen was the actual president of the Ro- Ro- Grandi Valley Council, or is it Council, or what was the? I need to look at it again. I'm sorry, I tell you, I've been up for a while. But, but I just think they have more experience. They've done the work already, and I think that's going to save us money. And again, if negotiations can't come and draw, then I would be happy to go with, with the other company. But I'd like to give the company that's already done the work and has the experience and specializes in the, the opportunity to at least come and negotiate with them, and I think we'll get a better, quicker turnaround and a better product, because it's already been, that's a lot of work. Can you agree with that? Excuse me, Chris. What was their level of work? I'm just curious.
So this, this study is a regional modeling effort. There, there was a lot of work done in 2008 in our master drainage plan that we have the data for, that we anticipate some of it will be incorporated, but this, this is going outside the City of Harlingen and looking at a 300-square, square-mile radius modeling effort.
So basically, we're, we have the City of Harlingen, which they did in 2008. Some of that's going to be incorporated.
The city still has that data? Yes, sir.
Is there a big difference between number one and number two?
Um, you know, so as an evaluation committee, we, we, we try our best to rank these things. You know, we all, we all did our part. The evaluation committee was seven members. Some of it was from our regional partners. We, we all came together and did our rankings, and independent of each other, and this was the aggregate total. So to say one firm is better than the other is, is not, it's hard to do.
No, no, I'm, no, I know.
What was the score?
Yeah, what was the score? That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
You didn't put them in the packet?
So the, they should be in the packet.
No. Do you have extras?
I apologize.
I do, absolutely.
I think I can find it.
Maybe I missed it. Sure, so I have, I have that one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Robert.
Are you looking for the ranking?
Yeah.
No, the, the scoring, Mayor. I have them in my packet.
It's in the packet, under item 6.
Wait, did you scroll down on item 6?
Specifically, what do you, what did you want to see?
He wants to see the actual score.
No, oh, what I'm, I just wanted to see the scores. Like, there was a huge difference between one and two. That's, that's what I was asking. But I have them right here, so I'm looking at it right now. So there's like basically a three-point difference between-
Half was 97.4, and CSE was 94.9. So-
Okay, a little bit less.
Two and a half, two and a half points out of 100. So they're close. Both of them are close.
Right. And that's who I'd like to give the opportunity to.
And that's who I'd like to give the opportunity to.
So we have a vote?
You may have a motion in a second.
Rank CSC first and Half second.
Okay.
Is there a, do we have a second?
Are we voting, are you?
Voting.
Second.
Any second.
Is there any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Item Seven, Consideration Possible Action to Allow License to Encroach at the south of 18.11 feet by 101.6 feet, more or less, to the existing 20-foot alley right of way for the property located in 1715 South First Street, bearing a legal distribution of .04 acre tract of land, more or less, being a portion of 20-foot alley right of way adjacent to Lot 23, Block 32, the Finwood Heights subdivision applicant Gilbert Gonzalez and Martha Garza.
Yes, Mayor, we have an alley that got dedicated many years ago, but it got enclosed. It is not used as an alley, but it's still a dedicated property. And the property owner would like to pave it and use it as a driveway. So the dedicated alley is here, but it got enclosed many, many years ago. The city does not use it, but we still own, we own the land. So the property owners are asking for permission to pave this portion to make it like a driveway for their house. We checked with all the city departments and utility companies, nobody has any objections. In the license agreement that is in your packet, it states that if the city has to cut the asphalt to maintain a water line or sewer line, that the city has no obligations to repaint the driveway. So that's included in the license to encroach. So staff recommends, this is the aerial photo, staff recommends approval. Based on these stipulations.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. You've got a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Item Eight, Consideration Possible Action to Authorize Staff to Contract Facility Solutions Group, FCG Lining Contractors utilizing the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase and installation of 200-kilowatt emergency generator, Lancy Hill.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. This item here is requesting for staff to enter into a contract with FSG. FSG is the electrical contractor. And the city health department has received a grant in the amount of $190,000. We went out and met with several electrical contractors, and FSG is the lowest bid. And we want to use the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Program to be able to hire them. One thing that I need to mention, though, is the price. We called the contractor the lowest bid contract, and their price went up about $3,030. We wanted to make sure that their price was still good because they're only giving us 15 days pricing.
Because of material?
Yes. And so we called them, and so it went up to $205,030.
Things are going up.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Item Nine, Consideration Possible Action to Authorize Staff to Contract Alamo One Facility Services Utilizing Intermodal Local Purchasing System to Reconstruct the Roof at the Harlingen Library.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission.
You okay?
Yeah, no, I'm just, we have a roofer on the... How was your bid?
So we went out and visited.
What?
Again, we went out and visited with several roofing contractors. We also were meeting with the local structural contractor, I mean, architect or engineer, because we were trying to see if we would create specifications for the roof to go out for bid. Well, what we did was we used the existing construction drawings that we had for the library. And so we went out and met with a few contractors. And again, using the Cooperative Purchasing Program, we met with A1 Facility Services. A1 Facility Services has done some work for us before. They did the training tower for us at the McCowsky. They're doing the parking lot right now for the Humane Society. And then they did the municipal court. The contractor will be replacing the roof. The roof at the library was replaced in 2007 by Seacrest Hall. And so the new contractor, the replacement, we're going to use the modified bitumen. They're going to install about 40,000 square feet. Contractor's giving us 20-year warranty from the manufacturer and then three-year warranty from the actual contractor. And again, we want to use the TIPS, which is a cooperative purchasing program, to hire this contractor.
So the last time it was 2007?
Yes, sir.
And I guess that warranty is almost out, or was that 20 years as well?
It was 10 years and it's already expired.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Purchase of Capital Items Using the Savings Due to Prepayment and the Price of the Engine Company and Aerial Truck.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. In this item before you, we are respectfully requesting approval and authorization to purchase equipment and capital items as shown in your packets from the savings of the purchase of our new engine company and aerial truck. In your packet is a list of equipment to be placed on the new units along with the quotes for the F-250s and Ford Explorer. Now, we will be turning in 2006 Ford F-350 and 2010 Ford F-250, and also an Explorer that's 2003. Staff recommends approval, and I'll answer any questions.
I want to commend the chief for doing what he did. Because he was able to order the ladder truck early and pay for it upfront, we realize these savings that are allowing us to buy this additional equipment. One of the pieces of equipment was in next year's budget that we pulled back off. So, great job to him for thinking about how to save us money and in turn utilize it to buy additional equipment that's needed.
That was your idea?
What? No, mine was the brush trailer. I was like, what?
As you remember.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign.
Appreciate it, thank you, Chief.
Good work. Out of 12, Consideration Possible Action to Authorize Cities MIS Department to Transfer Their Services to Take advantage of the current promotions.
This item was tabled, Mayor, so it needs to be pulled off the table.
Motion to take off the table?
To bring back.
Bring it off the, bring it back to the table.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
They have to vote.
All of you, aye.
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 It's a long meeting.
No, that was the first and second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We have comparison here with the top mobile providers. The main difference among the three of them is the free phones provided by AT&amp;T, current provider, and Verizon Wireless. Verizon Wireless is giving us 51,000 one-time credit plus the option to upgrade phones every 10 months. So staff is recommending to transfer our services to Verizon.
A motion for approval.
Second.
One question. Is this like, how long is the contract for?
No, it's not a contract.
Oh, so just continue, okay, okay.
So we can...
Okay, no, it's one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, the motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So we have Item 14, Consideration Possible Action to Approve a Partnership Between CDB and RGV Event Management.
Make them happy, Cassandra.
CDB Producing and Executing Rio Fest 2022. You have a 30-minute PowerPoint?
No, I do not.
Isn't the Waterworks man outside? He's got his presentation, right?
Yeah, Water, still Waterworks.
Good evening. Last time I spoke with, sorry. Last time I spoke with you all, it was regarding the future of Visit Harlingen. Of course, we changed the name, and I kind of gave you all an update of what we were doing. One of the things that tourism departments and cities do is host two-day paid events. As you all know, my department is rather small, so it's three whole people. But we want to make sure that we do provide these great events. You know, thankful to Dan, who really supports us, to have, to push for us to do more events, for more people to come to Harlingen, to improve the quality of life for our citizens. In thinking of this, we were actually approached by RGV Event Management. So he's here, actually. They hosted a, if you want to come, you can come. They hosted a Comic-Con type of event about two years ago that drew a lot of people to the Harlingen Convention Center. So this year, they are planning to do the same. So in order for us to work together, they would like for the city to, you know how we get 10 days use of the convention center? They would like two of those days to put on their convention, Harlingen Fan Fest, in October. And in return, they would help us plan a two-day paid event happening October of 2022. This event would be both of our teams coming together, but they would be able to help us approach corporate sponsorships that we are not able to get. So they have connections with corporate sponsorships. And we have one, a big one, in line right now that if this contract is signed, we'll be able to continue to pursue it. And that would probably attract more sponsorships. The more sponsorships we get, the least money would come from our hotel motel fund balance that we do have, it's not very large, but we do have a fund balance that we'll be able to pull from. We do have a breakdown of the cost for the event, but it is a lot of money for us. And again, what the event production team would help us with would also be volunteers for the actual two-day paid event, for helping us procure Carnival, for helping us procure sponsorship funds, a minimum of $50,000, and for also helping us set up a vendor market in Casa de Amistad and a like movie showing area in the auditorium. So this would be a Visit Harlingen and RGV Event Management production.
How would you handle security?
Security, so for our other events, since it's only one day, for night time, we hire a staff for security. But our police department is always there, present at all of our events. If we do have to pay for them to be on-site, then that would be something to include in the budget.
But, so you don't share in the cost of the security?
Well, the event costs would all be in one because the sponsorship would come into one.
Okay, I'm sorry, you sprint it?
So because the sponsorship goes into the, that they would procure for us, goes into the expenditures of the event, it would all be in one event.
So we could expense the security?
So we could expense the security, correct.
Without touching...
This is an opportunity to bring back a Rio Fest today.
Right, but my question is, if it's, let's say example, $50,000, we can budget the security in that?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Yes, we have...
That we're not having to pay...
So we're just trying to, we're trying to leverage partnerships.
Yes, I understand it. So we'll get more program details later.
Correct.
This is just, okay...
A contract between RGV Event Management and us.
To give Comic-Con two of our days in exchange for their assistance with a Rio Fest-style event, which would be a kind of comeback, rebirth of Rio Fest.
So are the dollars comparable?
Are the dollars comparable? Yes, very much so, because...
So for example, the value of what we're doing this year is how much? An estimate?
So if we give them this year the two days, it's approximately $20,000, and they have to bring us a minimum of $50,000 in sponsorships.
So it's $70,000 total, and then the following year would be the same contribution, or it would be flipped?
The following year, we haven't exactly brought a five-year plan yet. We are working on that. Right now, it is just working on the partnership between RGV Event Management and ourselves.
Okay, so hold on. I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Because I think, unless I heard wrong, you stated that if you do this for them this year, they're going to do something for you next year?
Yes.
Right. So what my question is, and maybe it's for you, sir. If it's $20,000 on your end and $50,000 on his end, next year, does that flip? And it's our turn to do 50,000? You do 20,000? Or how does that work?
Sorry, we haven't got into the details as far as that because with everything going on with COVID, we don't want to jump the gun with that. We are doing a ticket split with the city as well, with the Comic. We don't call it Comic-Con. I know that's what people call it, but out of respect for the McAllen Show, we call it Fan Convention, just because they have a trademark on that name, so we try not to use it.
What exactly is it, sir? I'm sorry, just...
We're known as Harlingen Fan Convention, and basically what that is...
Like a car show?
No, it's a comic convention. We just can't use the term Comic-Con.
Oh, comic, like comics?
Yeah, comics, comics. We'll have all types of celebrities there. We'll have vendors with all types of comics, collectibles, all that stuff.
I have one, one...
Yes.
Can you bring someone from Star Trek? Seriously? That's all I want.
Well, we're working on some pretty cool guests. Cassandra kind of laid it out a little bit. We'll have some people from DC, from Marvel, anime. If you guys remember the one that we had in 2019, I know Dan went to it. We had almost 6,000 people show up. That was pre-pandemic.
Yeah, they had, yeah, here.
We had it here at the convention center.
That's awesome.
Motion to approve.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you hear any noise, I'm going to ask a lot of questions.
Oh, no, I'm good with it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your else time, thank you.
On 15 board appointments?
I have nothing.
I have one, Javier De Leon to the EDC Board.
Good choice. Board appointments?
I'm ready this time, maybe. I'll name Delia Gavazos-Gomez for the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board, replacing Gonzalo Gonzalez. And Rakish Patel for the Convention Visitors Bureau to replace Michelle Lopez. Leandra Villarreal Ruiz for the Parks Advisory Board to replace Aurelio Torres. And then the reappointments, former Ramos for the Golf Course Advisory Board. Cesar Morales, no relation, to the Community Development Board. And Rudy Martinez for the Zoning Board of Adjustments. I'll ask more in two weeks.
All right, that's good.
Thank you.
Do you have any, Mr. Pettis, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Did you make a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like a sign, motion carries. All right, that concludes our agenda. Thank you all, and we'll be safe, everybody.